Good evening, I'd like to call our meeting to order tonight. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our prayer. Right from our prayer, we'll go right into the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Higginbotham, call roll please.
Councilman Boozer?
Here.
President Logan?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Councilman Davis?
Here.
Councilman Hogg?
Here.
Give a quote, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item five is approval of the agenda in our pre-meeting, very light agenda. Have a few things such as an executive session. I will add that Ron Davis and his office has assured us it will not take three hours, but one hour and thirty minutes. So we'll make sure we get ready to move forward with the executive session added on to our agenda. So that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, my Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Higginbotham.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item six, visitors to address our council, Mr. Chuck Gordo. Chuck, thank you so much for, uh, thank you to address us in our pre-meeting, but we look forward to the... To round two.
All right. Could be round three, never know. All right, thank you, Mr. President, Mayor, Council. Appreciate you having me speak this evening. Uh, my name is Chuck Gordo, my address is thirty-nine oh nine Northwood Lake Drive West, Northport. Um, I'm here this evening to present data, uh, from the twenty-fifteen Walker study that was done, uh, for the County Board of Education. The study was prepared for use in determining growth and capacity or capital projects through the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. This study reflects school capacity. At the time, the study was completed in twenty-fifteen, so that's two and a half years down the road. Uh, the Walker study, uh, projected data is, is actually for seven and a half years, so we're looking, it was done for a ten-year time, we're two and a half years down the road, and the projection is for, from this time, for seven and a half years. What I have this evening is four spreadsheets to show you and, and also to the public, um, kind of making sense of the, uh, data that's been presented by the County Board in the past, and, um, we, um, I know there's several of us, uh, citizens that, uh, were kind of concerned how the data's been presented. Now, the Walker study data, as far as I know, is a extremely reputable company. Uh, they have been, um, very accurate in the past. What we're trying to do is present the data in a different way that gives you an idea of how Northport and the other areas are growing or not growing, and how decisions can be made based on that information. So what we have is the ten-year growth by zone. There are two charts or two spreadsheets, okay? And these are by growth. So the, uh, the first one is, uh, has the TCHS zone, the Brookwood zone, Northside, Hillcrest, Holt, and Sipsey Valley zones. Now, these zones mean that all the schools within the zone, uh, feed into, uh, that particular high school. For example, Crestmont, everybody from there would eventually, uh, graduate from County High. All right? And it's a good thing that I made a copy of this because I certainly cannot read that up there. Okay? I don't know if you can zoom in on that a little bit? Okay. All right. Of course, everybody has a copy, um, Council and Mayor. Uh, if you'll notice, um, now, all these are by zones, okay? So if you look on to the left, it says school, TCHS, Brookwood, uh, Northside, Hillcrest, uh, Holt, and El, and, um, Sipsey Valley. So you have one, two, three, four, five, and six. All right? And one of the more important numbers, and we went into a lot more detail in the, uh, pre-meeting, I won't go into that much, but one of the more important numbers is, um, where it says zone total for TCHSHS, it is a twenty-three percent increase in, um, growth for that school, okay? Or for that zone. That is, that actual school itself has a forty-six percent increase. This is seven and a half years down the road. Okay? If you'll look at the other zones, Brookwood has a three percent increase, Northside has a ten percent loss, um, or decrease. Uh, Hillcrest has a one percent increase, Holt is flat at zero percent, and Sipsey Valley is growing at six percent. Again, these are projections done by the Walker study, uh, for the County Board of Education. All right? Now, the second chart is the exact same data, except is now sorted, uh, by, uh, the percentage of growth. So you have, what we've done, we've taken out the zones and we just have the schools, um, going from forty-six percent with, um, County High, then that's the growth, same, same as charted before. Um, you'll notice Crestmont is at thirty-eight percent and Si, um, Eccles is at thirty-four percent. So the three top growers in the, uh, in the entire County Board of Education area are, um, in Northport, okay? You'll look down and then eventually you'll see Brookwood going into negative one percent all the way down to Northside at, um, um, decreasing by fourteen percent. All right? Now, there's only one school in the, uh, school zone that's projected to decrease, um, by, um, any amount that, that's in the Northport or the County High Zone, and that's Vestavia. And that's just a small decrease. Okay? Now, the second set of charts, first ones again are by growth, right? The second chart are by capacity. So you have ten-year school capacity by zone, two charts, same zones, okay? Now, if you'll, and again, that's a little, little small, but if you can see that, you'll notice these are school capacities by zone, same zones all the way down, County High, uh, Brookwood, Northside, Hillcrest, um, Holt, and Sipsey Valley. Now, if you look on the right, that gives you the percentage of, um, increase of, uh, capacity. All right? And what you have there in the County High Zone, okay? You have, um, six percent, okay? Now, that's, that's, that's what the needs are. You have an increase there of six percent, all right? I give you example, Eccles, you have actually a need of thirty-six percent. All right? Then you go down each zone after that. Every one after that decreases. You have, um, Brookwood at, um, negative, um, dropping by eighteen percent, Northside dropping by twelve percent, Hillcrest dropping by thirteen, Holt by twenty-eight, and Sipsey Valley by nine percent, okay? So these are school capacities that are, um, the, um, increasing or decreasing, okay? Now, go to the next one. Okay? And this is the exact same data, again, sorted, taking out the school zones and just sorted by the, uh, percentage of over or under capacity, all right? So if you'll look at the top, um, you have Crestmont, Eccles, and Flatwoods, and Matthews. These four are projected to be over-capacity schools that are within the TCHS zone, okay? And then you'll notice as you go down, I have it circled here, uh, those are about sixty-five percent of the schools that are actually under capacity, um, by the year twenty-twenty-five, okay? That means they have more than enough. The ones at the top do not have enough. Okay? That's where there would be building or capital projects coming into play. If you could back up, I missed it in the, okay, this one here. All right, so this is the first chart, um, that's dealing with growth. Now, I want you to notice this, almost all of the growth in ten years, okay, is in the TCHS zone, in the County High Zone or the Northport Zone. All right, all zones, and I'll just have to read this out to you, is seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight, okay? That's the entire amount in twenty-fifteen of all students, okay? The amount that is projected by Walker is nineteen thousand one hundred and nineteen, that's an increase thirteen thirty-one or seven percent, okay? Now, let's take out the County High Zone for a second. Take that out, you have the amounts that are there in twenty-fifteen are twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-six, projected by Walker are twelve five fourteen, that's an increase of seventy-eight students or an increase of one percent. So what that tells me, or tells anybody, that where's your growth lying in the county, but right here in Northport, Alabama? So my, my charge to you as a council is that, um, and I appreciate you taking the time to look at this, uh, data, that, that you're able to use this data, um, and I know you're not making the decisions for the County Board of Education, um, but you certainly have the ability to speak to them, um, and to, uh, request, um, that certain things be done a certain way for the betterment of all of us, for all of our students, for our children, and our grandchildren. I appreciate the time that you've, um, given to me this evening. Uh, do you have any questions on that?
I don't have any questions, I have several comments, and I'd like to say thank you so much for working, uh, on this and presenting this to us tonight. Uh, there's been quite a bit of discussion prior to tonight, uh, about, uh, the proposed, uh, building project in, in Northport. Uh, there's, uh, two proposals, as a matter of fact, that's been, uh, that has been, uh, presented, uh, and it's common knowledge because it's, there's a chart and a form already sent out with that on it. And I think that no decision has been made by the, uh, board, but they, they, uh, are in a situation, they need to make a decision on what plan that they're gonna use. So they're leaning towards Plan B, uh, and that would be Northport Elementary, Flatwoods, Huntington Place, and the new school in the northern zone, and Crestmont Elementary, Matthews Elementary, Fossett Vestavia, Collins Riverside, and Eccles, uh, are, not Eccles, in the southern zone, and all students would go to a new school built, uh, on the existing County High property, and that would be a, uh, five-six school, would be the new school, and then Eccles would take all seventh and eighth graders, uh, at Eccles. So you'd have all fifth and sixth graders after the pre-K, uh, students went to the other, uh, schools, except, uh, Collins Riverside would keep their fifth and sixth graders, uh, in, uh, with, with their group, uh, at, with this plan. There's several other things there, the, um, and I'm a forty-year educator, spent twenty-seven years in Tuscaloosa County School District, and, uh, then went to Mississippi for another seventeen years, and I, I have some, uh, strong feelings about the makeup of the fifth and sixth grade school. Statistically, I've done some research, and fifth and sixth grade school, there's three-hundred and sixty-eight fifth and sixth grade schools in the United States. That was in nineteen ninety-five. I've tried to find how many was, there is now, and couldn't get it, so I'm having to go on ninety-five data, they, they're going on fifteen data. But there's eight thousand, almost nine thousand, sixth through eighth grade schools. Um, and everybody in the world can't be wrong with three-hundred and sixty-eight, and also statistics also, also show that a seventh and eighth grade school is the, uh, worst configuration that you can have. That used to be the thing when you and I went to school, but, uh, that's, that's not the configuration that's best, in my opinion, as a forty-year educator. Also, uh, you know, there's, there's been some discussion about a fifth through eighth school, and our former mayor came, uh, uh, two weeks ago, and, you know, requested that we hold the board, we don't wanna do the board's job, we just, to hold the board, uh, to what they promised in oh-eight, was it, Mayor? Oh-eight, and that was a middle school, a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade school. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade school, as I said, has nine thousand schools. Uh, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, uh, is the going thing. Puberty is dropping, uh, puberty is, uh, beginning around the, uh, the age of eleven years old, used to be twelve, thirteen, fourteen, so that's dropped, so, you know, that, uh, they're, uh, liking the fifth through eighth grade school more and more. Uh, with the fifth, another negative about fifth and sixth and seventh, eighth, is we're gonna, uh, transition for kids is, you know, terrible. It doesn't matter what, where you start them or where you finish them, it's a problem. And if they're going to the fifth grade, they gonna, you know, be overwhelmed, and then they stay there only two years. If, if they start in the, uh, seventh grade, they're gonna be overwhelmed, and then they're gonna go to the ninth grade two years later, and they're gonna be overwhelmed again, so. Ideally, um, and if you look at the rest of the district, Northside has a perfect setup. More, Northside has, uh, uh, three schools on one, uh, property, which is, which is outstanding. Uh, and all of the other schools except for Attable Primary and, and, um, Inglewood, which has pre-K through, uh, uh, pre-K through two, and then Inglewood has three, four, and five, which is working for them. Brookwood has three schools and has a K-five, six, seven, eight, nine through twelve. Hillcrest has basically the same thing except for the example I told you. Holt has the same thing, uh, K-five, six through eight, and that's all, uh, you know, speaking personally, that, that I would like, I know they have a great charge, they have a tough decision because we have, we need, uh, help in all of our schools. So I just, you know, um, I would like to stand on record tonight and say thank you for coming, bringing this to, to, to our attention, and we've, we've been discussing this for a while now, and we do not, as a council, think that this is, um, the best configuration, the best plan for Northport schools in the future.
Well, we all appreciate your discussions with the County Board, and we would hope that those discussions would be the right thing for our students, and, uh, we appreciate you doing that, um, and I hope this data will help you in, in that, in those discussions. Thank you.
I think Mr. Glenn would like to come up and speak also.
Come on up, Ray. What I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll jump you, 'cause I think you're, you're discussing or you're asking about the same thing, so I'll use you as a visitor to address the council if it pleases, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that. Mayor Aaron, Council. We, uh, yeah, I appreciate Chuck doing this. We had a hard time seeing that in the back, so it was kinda hard to really get the full grasp of this thing, but basically what he was saying and what our numbers are saying, and they're not our numbers, these are County Board numbers that were done two and a half years ago, that would help them decide where schools would be built based on a bond issue that was, was, uh, done then. And let me, let me kinda go backwards for a second, and then, uh, you'll know kinda what I'm trying to do. For years, in order to build a school in Tuscaloosa County, you had to get a one-cent sales tax, uh, from the County Commission, extended or, or whatever. And what happens so many times in politics is that in order to get that County Commissioner's vote, you had to promise something in their district. That's not the best way to do things, but that was the way it works. Now, what happened was, in these cases, and some, in many cases, actually, we had schools built that probably wasn't in the highest priority place based on enrollment and other needs, but it had to be built there because of politics. So about two years ago, in twenty sixteen, the, the County Board and County Commission got together, they changed the way the, the money is distributed, so that the County Board gets a set amount now, almost guaranteed amount, and the County Commission does not have to vote for it. That was to take politics out of this, out of these decisions. Uh, one of the downsides of this was we got a lot less money, the County Board, and so we have less to do with now than we did before. And, uh, and without me going a whole lot farther, let me say that, that we don't have any bad people in the County Board, we have good people. Now, I'm, I'm gonna show that some mistakes, I think, have been made, and I'm not saying on purpose, all I'm saying is that Northport is showing all the growth, but we're getting the least. And that's, I, I think that's what most of y'all have said, because the plans that we have talked about, and, uh, Councilman Boozer there has, has talked a little about two different plans, uh, has us busing our students around the county where that's not happening anywhere else in Tuscaloosa County. Nowhere else are we busing our students past a school that they're eligible to go to to get to another school, nowhere. But with both of these plans, we're doing that, and I don't think that's fair to the kids in Northport, it's not fair to these parents who are here, a lot of them are here tonight, to, uh, you know, they gotta go to three or four different schools if they have kids that are close in age. The other thing, the, the Plan A and Plan B that, that we've seen, uh, and I haven't studied Plan B as much as, uh, Councilman Boozer, but both of them have all of our kids being bused one way or another. They don't at Brookwood, they don't at Holt, they don't at Sipsey Valley, and all of our students will have to go to four different schools. That don't happen any other zone. Now, the data that you're looking at, the County Board had this data two and a half years ago, when we had eighty-five million dollars to spend, and the way we got that money to spend was they pledged the revenue they would get off the sales tax to a bond issue. This allowed them to do the following projects, Sipsey Valley Middle School, the, the Northport School, uh, an annex, a career tech annex at County High, and Holt High School, and that pretty much consumed eighty-five million. Now, this data is very clear that our problem was not just at the, at the middle school level, it was at the elementary level, and they had this data. My question is, why was that not addressed when we had eighty-five million dollars? And when we started discussing this with County Board people, they said, "We all come up with a better plan." So we did come up with a better plan, and the better plan is to build the middle school like you promised, which is sixth, seventh, and eighth, and that's what you promised, and build an elementary school where the growth is, which makes sense. They said, "Well, we don't have the money." Well, we had the money two and a half years ago when this was being looked at, and County, the County Board had this data and we didn't. I don't believe, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that these projections were ever shared with, with Northport City. In fact, the first I heard of it was when the forums were going on this past April, I pulled, uh, it was on the website, and I put their data, which was in, on graphs and things that looked real nice, but they were presented in a way that you couldn't compare zone to zone. But what Chuck had, has shown you here is comparing them zone to zone, and, and what stands out is in every, in every one of these, uh, pages, you see Northport at the top in terms of over enrollment, you see Northport at the top in over-capacity and in growth, not even close, not even close. But yet, we're the last ones here, it looks like, to, to be dealt with, and the money's gone, they say. So where do we go from here? And I'm not criticizing any board members, but I will say this, when you look at the numbers and you see, see Sipsey Valley is getting a middle school, and you compare the numbers to our numbers, they're not even close to our needs. When you look at Holt and compare their numbers to our numbers, when, in ten years, seven years from now, they're still thirty-eight percent or whatever, I can't read the percentages, they're still under-enrolled. When you look at Brookwood High School, where I taught with Coach Boozer, uh, they're gonna be on, they're under-enrolled right now and will be under-enrolled, where we're right at the top of needs. How did this happen? What happened that when they were all looking at this data, that they came up with these schools? And what I, I think happened, uh, is that we had, I know Bill Copeland, a fine man, he said, "It's my time to get a school, own a school." Same thing with Don Presley, County Board member, that district, fine man, good friend of mine, he went to battle for his people, even though the numbers didn't show what our numbers are showing, they got their school. At Holt, Smith Moore, fine man, met with him the other day. He said, "I have waited my turn, I'm the last high school, it's the oldest high school, and we're gonna build Holt High School." And there were, was talk, but, because we knew there was not gonna be growth out there, and there was talk of busing those kids to Davis Emerson, maybe even to County High, all that had, has been thrown around. He said, "No, he said, "We're not busing kids. We want this school in this school zone, close as we can get to where it is right now." He got it. But yet, we sit here with needs, and we're not getting it, and we're talking about busing our kids when we didn't bus those kids at Holt, we haven't bused them anywhere else. Why should Northport kids be bused and be the only ones? I see no fairness in that. And I appreciate, I appreciate y'all, you know, y'all wear a thousand different hats, y'all are dealing with transportation, police, fire, sanitation, and, and you shouldn't be having to deal with County Board or, or Board of Education, uh, or wearing that hat that, that they should be wearing. I shouldn't be here today with it. This should've been taken care of two and a half years ago when we had eighty-five million dollars. And now to be told, "Well, we're out of money." When you look at these, and y'all, y'all can see them, they can't, I wish it was bigger, when you look, it's really disappointing to, to see what we're trying to deal with here in Northport, and our kids are gonna be treated this way, nobody else is, and I have a problem with that, I have a real problem with that. You know, I'm a Northport person, raised, Ms. Erin taught me math, we got a man right there, and, and I'm bragging on City Council there because that man right there, he won't tell you this, he's done about everything in education, and they're naming fields after him over in Mississippi right now where he came from, and over here, about after three years, we run Princels out on rail. Would tar and feather them if we could, but they're right, they, they're naming things after Lee, and that, and he will never tell you that, and I found out about that, but, so we got, we got two educators here that, that know what it's like to be in a school. We do have a lot of people that don't know, and it sure is easy to be on the outside and, and say what they ought to do. And it sure is easy to be on the outside and say what they ought to do. These two have been on the inside and know what I'm talking about. And I don't know where this is gonna go. And I don't know if, what we can do about it, but there has been a mistake made, not on purpose. And I will say that the board members, I've worked with all of them, they're friends of mine. And they're not, they mean no harm, but a mistake was made, and Northport didn't make the mistake. But we're the ones gonna pay the price. In my business, when we quote something wrong and we missed a whole room, we eat it because we made the mistake. Because our word is more important than the money. We don't care if we lose on it, we'll be okay. And we were promised a six through eight. We didn't get it. And we were promised a six through eight when they saw data knowing that the elementary problem is just as severe as the middle school problem, and did nothing about it when we had the money. So, folks, I don't know how, I don't know what to tell you. It's not my place to recommend, because I wasn't elected to do this. And I thank y'all for accepting this problem and trying to address it any way you can. But we've gotta take care of our kids. That's, and y'all will deal with some sticky stuff, might do it tonight, I don't know, but y'all have lots of problems to deal with. But you will not deal with anything more important to the future of this city than what happens with the school system. And I was talking to a board member the other day, and he said, "Well, we can correct it later on." No, you cannot correct it later on. Because these people that move out of Forest Glen and Glencrest and Bristol Park, because they were told that their kids would be right down the road there for three schools, and that's all they would have to go to. When they move out, they're not coming back. There's houses sitting in some of these places now. People are getting word that we're not getting what we said we were gonna get. And this is a big investment, this will be the biggest investment that these people will ever make. So if we don't get this right now, and I wouldn't care if this was delayed a year. I would rather it be delayed a year and get this right than to do it wrong and start busing kids and running everybody out of Northport. You know, we don't have to look very far to see how well this works. You can look right across the river. When you're busing kids by grade, and as Councilman Boozer pointed out, that is the worst way to educate our kids. It's been proven time and time again. Surely, we're not gonna allow that to happen in Northport. And I'm humbly asking that you continue the fight, and I know many of you have, and I've talked to most of you. And I know how you feel, and I know you want what's best for Northport, and I appreciate your service. Remember, these little kids that we get on that bus for the first time and watch them go. I'm always amazed at the parents when I drive by and I'm watching this, how much they have to trust us. I'm wearing my education hat now. How much they have to trust us to let us do that. We, they can't fight for themselves. Those kids, those five-year-olds, six-year-olds, they can't fight for themselves. We've got to do it. And y'all are the ones to do it. This, I don't like being bulldozed. I don't like being told we're gonna have a forum for input on what we're gonna do when it's already on the website what you're gonna do. How does that make you feel when you walk in there, it's already been decided? How is that fair? How is it fair that Northport City Council was not shown this enrollment projection two and a half years ago when the county board had it? Why was it not? And this is the first we see of, and we have to do a spreadsheet on our own to actually be able to compare the zones. I don't like that. I would think you would. So let's stand together if we will. I guarantee you, there's no one out here that likes what's going on with this plan, either plans. I don't want a fourth grader with an eighth grader, a fifth grader with an eighth grader. I was talking to an elementary PE person this weekend. He said, "You would not believe how much difference it is between a fifth grader and a sixth grader, mentally and physically." He works with them all the time. And that's why, as Coach, excuse me, Coach, Councilman Boozer, that's why he said that all over this country, the preferred breakdown is six, seven, and eight. Fifth graders don't need to be, we don't need to be busing any fifth and sixth graders together. You know, sixth graders, that's a year behind with fifth grader. And there's already gonna be a difference in the puberty, and according to numbers, as we get older, the kids, the kids' puberty, when I say get older, as time goes on, it's gonna even get less than the sixth grade. It may even move into the fifth grade, and does occasionally. But primarily, most of it's happening in the sixth grade now. And I have been in a junior high, when we were at Brookwood, we had both, and I can tell you right now, there's some craziness there. But we know it, and we dealt with it. Wasn't a bad situation, was it, Coach? Thank you for your time. I appreciate, I appreciate y'all listeners. I appreciate the people that are here tonight that care enough to be here to help their kids, to fight for their kids. And I appreciate that, I really do. And again, thank you for your time, and thanks to Chuck.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank Ray and Chuck for what they have done. But perhaps I'm the only one old enough here to remember that the only reason we got a new Tuscaloosa County High School was because the city of Northport, its residents and its supporters, and the city council of Northport put up tons of money. The city itself put up five million toward that project and helped raise the other. They had a committee that got the land, most of it was donated, a hundred forty acres. So, we had already purchased our school. Where no other area in this county has put up one dime toward their school. And I'm not bitter about that. I would do it all over again. I was part of that council that committed themselves to five million dollars. I would do it again today, and I would work just as hard again to raise money for that school because it was so desperately needed. But let's be mindful that once again, in order for us to get anything, it looks like we will have to raise the money ourselves. That's my stuff for tonight.
Don, I think you're, I think you're, I'm gonna lump you in with the group. Come on up. State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Don Wallace, CPA at 527 Main Avenue, Northport, Alabama. I'm a recovering politician, as some of you know.
They got classes for that, I think.
Which unfortunately for you guys makes me an activist again.
That's right.
So the rest of the city and county has to look out, because I have nothing else to do now. Just a couple of notes for what I wanna say. I note that Sipsey Valley, according to the plan, would be getting their full middle school and whatever configuration they do it there. So that's correct, Northport would be the one that would be treated differently or aligned differently, however you wanna look at it. I would note that when we got the activity buildings that were completed in this last previous round of the tax, that was all Northport really got out of it, out of five years of tax money. And had to fight to get that, some of you know.
Some schools built their own.
Had to fight to get, oh, I know that, but I'm just saying, that was all Northport got out of the tax money, was the point. So, and it is correct, it's complicated things now with the tax structure change, because prior, there was about fifteen percent of the money that had been allocated for the school systems to use for textbooks, operations, things that some of these parents, like Ms. Tracy back here, have concerns about as well, but that's some school board business. But the rest of that was available. So when the tax structure changed, that changed the, one, the amount of money to address capital concerns like the two gentlemen have said, and also just changes the total dollars in how it's allocated. You have no leverage from the commission anymore in that process to deal with or look at some of these issues. The only other thing I'll say about the comments that were made is about the busing part of it. The city of Tuscaloosa had to get away from some of that stuff before they almost lost the city system. When we built Sipsey Valley, part of that was done because kids in Gina, Alabama, basically had to get on a school bus way before daylight to get to County High. Well, I submit to you, you've got kids living way up on Yellow Creek Road, way out. They have to, well, have to now, and will continue to have to in this configuration being proposed, have to come all the way essentially to downtown Northport for middle school. And that's one of the things that I wanted to say, and my comment tonight was, during the discussions we had, during this whole tax process before and during my time, it's at the end of the commission term, it was always centered around having a regular full middle school at the northern end of the city. So that we, so that we got to the neighborhood or area-type schools, which the city of Tuscaloosa spent a lot of money, time, and interest doing to get away from moving kids from grade to grade every year, which was a disaster. And we all knew that, they knew that. So there was never any talk of that, and I just, it's not an easy process. It's not easy now, you don't have any, I guess, direct input in that either. But I would encourage you as just a citizen and someone who was involved in some of it, use whatever leverage that you can. Try to, try to use whatever leverage you can to address those growth issues and those busing issues for the students of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. I'll defer to Councilman Davis, he wants to address the body.
Yeah, I just wanna take a few minutes to thank Mr. Glenn, Chuck, and Don for speaking on this, on this situation we have here with the school system. You know, November seventh, I raised my right hand to represent the citizens in District Four, and I know some of them are here tonight, and I appreciate y'all showing up. And that's what I'm gonna do. I started receiving phone calls back in April on this situation. I was fully aware of it, and I was fully aware that my constituents are not for this configuration of schools here in Northport. And so, I'm not sitting up here tonight representing myself. I'm representing all of you out here. And so, you were promised nine years ago that you'd get a middle school, okay? And what you're supposed to do, when you promise something, you're supposed to honor that promise. You know, twenty years ago, nineteen years ago, five councils ago, five mayors ago, whatever, they promised money to the new county high school that Mayor Aaron talked on. And guess what? Five councils later, we're still honoring that promise. About nine years ago, they promised to, and it's on the agenda tonight, the Project Crimson Agreement. That was nine years ago, we had a handshake on that. And now we're three councils later, and it just came up in the budget, thanks to Councilman Sullivan. We're gonna honor that promise. And I sit up here tonight and say that I am behind my constituents and the rest of Northport one hundred percent that we need a six, seven, and eight middle school. That's all I have, Jay.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll move right on to unfinished business. Item 7A1 is a second reading of an ordinance, I'm sorry. No, that's okay. What I'll do, what I'll do, and listen, this is my fault. I should've made this statement before the meeting. If there was someone here to sign up, we have a sign-in sheet. So, what we'll do, item thirteen is public comment. If you don't mind waiting just a tick, we'll get you on record. Is that okay? Everybody wants to speak? And that was, that was my fault, there's administrative error on my part. Yes, ma'am. Item 7A1 is a second reading of an ordinance adopting rules and regulations for Williamson Cemetery. Again, this is out of Ms. Starr's office. There are no changes to the regulations. This is basically first reading and second reading adopting the rules, of course, for our Williamson Cemetery and the operations and the maintenance therein. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance adopting the rules and regulations for Williamson Cemetery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Higginbotham.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item C is our consent agenda. We have fourteen items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training. Two items in particular, item three and item ten, of course. Folks, if you're looking at it, they are P O requisitions for our commitments to our county jail facilities. Again, these are quarterly invoices where we have been doubled up, of course. This is from January, March of this year, and the last one is from April, June of this year. So, again, P O requisitions for our various departments and travel and training. I'll make a motion to approve that consent agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Boozer. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Higginbotham.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Boozer?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item nine is reports of special committees to council. If any member of council wanted to give an update on their respective committee.
I'd like to announce, President Logan, that the administrative committee will meet tomorrow at three thirty. And we're working through the handbooks, and it's a timely task, but we're up to the challenge, aren't we, Mr. Rose?
All right, thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Hogg, unless you wanted to give a quick update, I would in our retail, that's okay. We actually, Councilman Hogg, myself, we appreciate the mayor and the citizens and the council allowing us to go through an RFP process to at least look at the interest for this building. So that process is in the pipeline now, so we'll be getting some RFPs from various developers and different development groups to see the feasibility, to see if the best and highest use for this building may need to be retail. I have my opinions, I think it does, so that's the RFP process. So I think middle of this month, you should have a completion date of all the RFPs that are submitted so we can begin the process of just vetting those RFPs and seeing if it's feasible and best and highest use to see if City Hall could be moved to a more downtown area location and Fire Station One to a more westerly location. With that being said, I know in our retail meetings that we've had, a lot are confidential. And with that being said, in our last presentation, if you were not here, one of the elements of that presentation was Amendment 772. It's an Alabama state code amendment where it allows cities and municipalities to utilize funds for private development use. It's totally legal. But with that being said, we wanted to make sure we had the right framework when we get to a point where incentives may be a possibility, where you have a fish on the hook. And in talking to Ron's office, we're not big on reinventing the wheel. So we've asked Ron to look at certain firms around the state to see who has a very good working knowledge of Amendment 772, where when we get to a point where we've got some retail and some development, a fish on the hook, so to speak, that amendment is gonna be so critical to make sure we have some skin in the game to protect us legally. I know Ron brought us back a recommendation, which I fully agree with, Trussell, Funderburg, Ria, and Bale. So if it pleases mayor and council, this law firm will actually help guide us and create the framework when we get to a point where we have a retail on the table ready to cook. And we wanna make sure that amendment, if we decide to use it, allows us to be very flexible in providing incentives so we can get what everybody's been talking about on social media, from an Apple Store to this. But let's be realistic. Let me just say that as a caveat. So, if it pleases mayor and council, I wanted to make a motion, again, out of our retail development committee, that the city implore the firm of Trussell, Funderburg, Ria, and Bale. That's Trussell, Funderburg, Ria, and Bale to assist the city with one or more retail development opportunities and agreements. And as a part of the motion, I wanted to make sure that our city administrator and city attorney are gonna be authorized to negotiate an agreement for the legal representation for our city with this law firm. So that's in the form of a motion, ladies and gentlemen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing number, Mr. Higginbotham.
President Logan?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan. Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are any, any other reports of committees to council? All right. Item ten is public hearings. We have none on the agenda to report. Item eleven, city administrator's business, Mr. Higginbotham.
I have no business, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item twelve is departmental business. We have actually two of them. I'll add one for legal. Uh, first one is engineering department, Mr. John Powell Webb, uh, city of Northport in our storm water management program plan.
Yes, President Logan, Mayor, Councilman, um, we would just like to invite the public to review our storm water management plan, to offer any feedback, any comments on it. You can, um, access it on our website under the engine, um, division, storm water management. There's a link there and, um, we would just want to get all the public comments and input to incorporate into our plan.
Thank you, John. Uh, second departmental business is under, uh, legal, Ron's office. I think, Ron, you had a request for an executive session? Okay. Wh- what I'll do in the interest of, uh, time and I guess process is we'll go through item thirteen, public comment. Item fourteen, mayor and council members' business, and I'll move item fifteen will be executive session, and then we'll go item sixteen, adjournment, if it pleases Mayor and Council. All right, we'll go to item thirteen, which is public comment. I know we've got some citizens who did not sign up, so again, I will go with the citizens who have signed up first and then somebody wanted to speak, if you would, just state your name and address for the record, once you, once you come up to the podium. Uh, first one is, uh, William, William Noel, and please forgive me if it's Howell. Nowell. Yes, sir. Spoken like a true gentleman. Let the lady go first. Here we go. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tracy Ferguson. I live at thirty-two sixty Palmetto Street, Northport, three, four, seven, five. I have three short things I want to speak on as a parent. I have a ten-year-old girl who attends Huntington in the fifth grade. The first thing is the whole busing system. Next year, when she goes to Echols, she begs to ride the bus because her friends ride the bus and we have the sweetest bus driver ever. But next year, I won't let her ride the bus because she will not swap buses in the public's parking lot, which is insane in my opinion as a mother. The second thing is the traffic on Midlary. I encourage all of you, just like I did the board members, please get out at seven o'clock A M. And try to go anywhere off Midlary. You're gonna be at a traffic jam both ways. And if you combine these schools, you're only gonna bring more traffic onto Midlary where all these children are on buses trying to get to school. The last thing I want to address is Mr. Boozer brought up the maturity. My child came home today with an F in social studies. I provided the notebook, I provided the glue sticks, and I provided the five rims of paper where she has to make her own social studies book. She received a bad grade for not finishing coloring her page for her social studies book. So you're telling me that a ten-year-old who in the fifth grade is being asked to color and graded on it is mature enough to be put with eight hundred other children in a combined school? I don't think so. As far as puberty goes, my child's not there and she's a long way from it. So you're going to expose her to things that she shouldn't have to be exposed to. So there's a big jump from coloring, numbering and gluing pages in a notebook to go into sixth grade with all these other kids, and I'm sure their parents feel the same way. It's about protecting my child and what's in the best interest of the children. When I moved here nine years ago, I was promised a middle school beside Northport Elementary, where my child would go to school with the same children she had been going to school with since kindergarten. I think that should be upheld. I think it should be about our children's well-being. And just like I have to do every month when it's time to pay bills, come up with the money and, and pay the bill and build a school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
I would take that, what you just said, get on the agenda for the County Board of Education's next meeting.
Yep.
And present that very thing, you made a very good case, present that to them.
Is there any other citizen who? Come on up, Ms., Ms. Jamie, come on up. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jamie Dykes, forty fifteen Frontier Street. I did not come here tonight to even speak because I knew that, that Chuck and, and Ray had it handled. Um, but what I will say is that when, a few years ago, we were talking about a Northport, uh, separate school system. And I was one of the main ones that said absolutely not vehemently opposed to it. I will tell you now that if the city, if the county school goes for it, I will be the first person in line and I will take my dying breath for a Northport city school system. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Dykes. Thank you. Any other citizen who, uh, who wanted to speak regarding, uh, school, school system? All right, I'll go back to the gentleman in the back, Mr. William. Please state your name and address for the record.
William Nowell, fifty-two seventeen Northwood Lake Drive West. Uh, twelve years ago, my dad passed away. We had been living with him for six, seven years, taking care of him. And, uh, in those eighteen years, we have not seen a dab asphalt on our cul-de-sac. Our asphalt's no thicker than that. I don't think it's been paved twice since the Northwood Lake was built. Because you can see, I think when they first come in to a road, they put tar and then the big slag, then the asphalt. Well, we're, the slag, you get slag after about that depth. We're in, and, uh, we either need, well, we're gonna have to have some, uh, potholes filled, uh, quite a few of them. But we need asphalt. You can drive over Northwood Lake and you won't see asphalt like ours. Cause it more, it looks more like pea gravel sitting on dirt. And, uh, I brought this for, uh, Ms. Brooks to show a map. I wa- I walked around our cul-de-sac and like I say, we've got several potholes about that deep and we're already in red clay and, and several of them. And I, and like I said, it's, it's been a long time since asphalt has been put down in our cul-de-sac. And I'd like to give this.
Sure, I, I'll take it. We will make sure that Brook, Brooks office gets that.
And that's about it. That's all. Like I said, I just, we need some relief. Because it is pitiful in our cul-de-sac. Thank you.
We, what we'll do is, um, Bruce, our city administrator, will, he's already tasked his staff and with counsel to look at our paving schedule.
Yeah, I almost flagged them down the other day when I saw the asphalt truck go by and I said, no, I better not. They'll, I would think it's road rage or something. But, uh, you know, it, the potholes need it anyway, but the next time y'all do asphalting, you need to do our circle.
Yes, sir.
And, and that one place where I show dirt, that's fifty ye- over fifty years of picking up trash at the end of that thing, and it, it needs about halfway back around. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next citizen signing to speak is, uh, Mr. Jody Jobson. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jody Jobson. I live at fifteen thirty-four Bellwood Lane, Northport, Alabama. And I'm just here to see if Ron got my answer, uh, for me. On the Tus- on. The question was, who is the Tuscaloosa County Forensics Committee? What is it? And it's still in, in, in existence and who the member is? Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jobson. All right, we'll go right into mayor and council members' business. I'll start with District One, Councilman Boozer.
Other than the admin meeting that I've already talked about, that's all I have. I've said enough.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, under my business, I, couple, couple things. Again, Cameron Pruitt, young man, uh, lost his battle with cancer. Um, if you notice at, at the game, um, Hertz had, had that R I P cam on it, so that was, that was for him. Uh, Northport, Northport young man, and we're gonna really miss him and I'm really thinking about his family at this time and just, I'll just be praying for the, uh, Mayfield family and the Pruitt family at this time. Uh, also, citizen of the year is tomorrow. That banquet's tomorrow, correct? Six P M. No. Five, five thirty. I'm sorry, would've been late. Five thirty P M. Five Points Baptist, right behind City Hall. Please, please be there. Um, and then I, I, I want to recognize, uh, Russ Ware. He's with B K I. He's, he's with our design team for the M L K Improvement Project. And Russ has been working extremely hard with Bruce and his staff, uh, to kind of get us to a point, and I wanted to, uh, give Russ about a minute or so to give us a quick update on that one.
Thank you, President Logan. We, uh, we're excited to get started on the project. We've, uh, starting to work on some conceptual drawings, uh, and we've had a, a kickoff meeting with Aldot and F H W A for the environmental process to kind of get, to get started, which is the, the first step you gotta do with the project. So we're, uh, working with F H W A and we're, uh, anticipating setting up a public involvement meeting, hopefully in the next month or two to, uh, kind of show the, the ideas we have. They'll be very similar to the, the last time that we presented. But, um, I, I think F H W A and Aldot are excited as well as we are about getting the, the project started and, uh, and having a successful project.
Thank you. Uh, that's all the business I have. Uh, District Three, Councilman Sullivan. No, if you got something else, I kind of like that. Listen, I'll, I'll give you. Mayor.
That's right. We're done for a while. Uh, no, I just want to say thanks to Ray and Chuck and, and Don for, uh, your comments and everybody that spoke. I know this lady left and Jamie in the back. I appreciate what you had to say. Um, you know, if you wonder, does this directly affect any of us up here? Well, I mean, I have a kindergartner who started this year. I also have a one-year-old at home, so, I mean, this directly affects me personally, my family. Um, I certainly appreciate Councilman Boozer and the work he's done. I think we've all put a good bit of time into this, none more than him and, uh, certainly relied on him for a lot of information. He's the expert. I'm not. I'm a sawmill. He was an educator, so, um, you know, where this goes from here, I, I think you'll see all of us pretty unified on what we feel is best. Um, at the end of the day, we're, we're gonna, we'll do what we can to do what's right, but we'll see what happens. Uh, you know, you made that comment. It was a hornet's nest a few years ago.
It was a hornet's nest, wasn't it, Jamie?
But you're right, you know. I'm not saying it's time to do that or not, but we'll, we'll see how it goes and I just appreciate, you know, council and mayor and, and everybody in the audience that, that's, gave us the information we need to, to look at this, so appreciate it and we'll, we'll see what happens.
Thank you, Councilman. District Four, Councilman Davis.
I don't have anything further.
District Five, Councilman Hogg.
I can't say, speaking on the, uh, whole school system that I do understand as a parent myself, not as a councilman. I have four children. Last year, we had four different schools, so. This year's a little bit better, but I understand where people are coming from and, and going to and from in the morning time. So, uh, I think the council will definitely take a good charge at, at looking at this with the data that's presented. Thanks, Chuck, with, with doing that. Um, they'll just try to hold the, the county school board, their feet to the fire, so to speak. So, um, I appreciate everyone that came out in, uh, parts of speaking on this. And we will definitely take a, a proactive approach to see what we can do because, um, county school system, let's just be honest, they, they rely on Northport. This is a, this is a big, uh, part of the county school board system as our residents. So at the end of the day, we want to take care of e- each of our citizens', uh, families. So thank you for the data and thank you for, uh, coming out to speak on that tonight. As for, um, everything else, I do want to thank the council for, uh, being proactive also on the Amendment seven, seven, two and retaining, uh, some council, um, outside of Will House of Ron. In order for us to be, uh, proactive going forward in trying to grow Northport, um, so thank y'all for doing that. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Mayor Aaron.
I like Councilman Boozer. I think I've said too much already. I will say this about the county board. At least they have, uh, listened to us.
Yeah.
Been willing to sit down and talk with us, and I do appreciate that, how much they will truly listen to us. We have no way of knowing at this point, but I will say that they have not slammed the door in our face. They have opened the door. Because nobody's gotten mad. We always left and to disagree, but still be friends, so. And I know their task is huge, as our task is financially. We struggle to make ends meet. They doing the same thing. Bottom line does come down to. Have stepped up to the plate more than one time, bailed them out for our schools. Bought for the schools in the city. I have given some of my discretionary funds, which is the first time, thanks to, uh, Councilman Sullivan, that the mayor's ever had any discretionary money. I've given money to the schools in the city. Every one on this board has done that. Done that. We also have the Rose Fine Arts Initiative, which we fund, uh, supplement heavily their arts program, those kinds of things. So we have really stepped up to the plate more than any other zone in the school system. I think they're very appreciative of that. They haven't slammed the door in our face. They're at least willing to sit down to the table with us and that is, that is a big. Hopefully we can convince them that they need to spend their money where the money comes from.
Thank you, Mayor. Very well said. And Chuck, thank you, and I, I'll make this one statement. Six percent, six percent, even though it may be apples to oranges, when you take out the T C H S zone, it's only one percent growth, if that, probably flat. So. All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, item fifteen is executive session again. Uh, legal department has estimated one and a half hours, but we will take a short recess prior to, but folks, you're more than welcome to stay if you want to just see sausage being made. If not, you can go home and enjoy your family. This point, I'll make a motion to go an executive session, uh, to last no more than one hour, one and a half hours. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? And staff is also excused too. I'm sorry. Thank, thank you, Councilman. Hearing number, Mr. Higginbotham.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Boozer.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan. Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
All right. The time actually is seven, seven-ten. We'll take about a.